Great, this is Jason Perro. I call the Monday, June 22nd, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. We apologize for the technical difficulty, but my understanding is that we're unable to get the YouTube livestream running at this time, continuing to try to get that going. Meanwhile, you can access this feed from Northborough Cable Access Channels, or by connecting to the Zoom meeting through the information given on the meeting agenda. Before we begin, I have some boilerplate to go through. This is an open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which is posted at the top of our agenda for this meeting, allows public bodies to be entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. And to clarify, that is a specific agenda item on the agenda. That is the only point during the meeting at which point we will be taking public comment. This meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being convened by the Zoom application, as posted on the town's website. The agenda indicates how you may join the Zoom meeting. Provides the Zoom webinar link and password. You can also access by cable access TV government channels Verizon 30 and Charter 192. And there's phone number 1646-876-9923, with meeting ID 82245876197, and password 713354 for access. When we reach a public comment this evening, I will follow with the instructions for how we conduct that. Remind the participants that this is being recorded and you are in view. Be mindful of that as we conduct the meeting. You may want to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Please be aware that other people can share, I'm sorry, other people can see you. And we ask that in conducting the meeting, you speak in a way that makes it easy for us to get through the business and take accurate meeting minutes. The ground rules for the meeting, as Chair, I will introduce each topic and speaker. After the speaker or presenter concludes their remarks, I will go through the members of the board, inviting each one to comment, question, or offer motions. Board members, please hold until your name is called. For any response, please wait for the Chair to yield the floor to you. And if members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. I think that pretty much concludes most of our business, except one final thing. Because this is being conducted remotely, all votes will be by roll call. So with that, I will proceed to the agenda. I will make one observation. Next Tuesday, June 30th is Election Day, which means this meeting for our Vice Chair, Dawn Rand, is her final meeting. She's not running for reelection. We will be having a little bit more to say about that later in the meeting. So proceeding along, first item is approval of the June 4th, 2020 Joint Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the June 4th, 2020 Joint Meeting Minutes as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I will note that the Board inadvertently approved these minutes last week. Too many meetings, too many similar talks about the budget. Kind of a deja vu experience as to which meeting minutes we've approved. So here we are again approving these minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Meeting minutes for June 4th carries unanimously. Next up, approval of the June 15th, 2020 Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the June 15th, 2020 Meeting Minutes as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Minutes are approved unanimously. It's now past the hour of 7:05. We have Fred Georgetown Moderator, consultation with Board of Selectmen regarding town meeting. We were going to have a presentation, I think, tonight about a few more of the details for the outdoor town meeting. Who would like to lead that? Fred, are you taking that? Yes, I need to unmute it, Fred.
I can start that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As everyone is probably aware, there is a town meeting scheduled for Saturday, July 11th, starting at 9:00 a.m. at the Algonquin Regional High School football field. There's been a lot of activity going on throughout town. Many of the town teams have been working on trying to come up with a way and process to make this a safe but accessible meeting. And I think we've made some good progress in that area. The main aspect of what's been going on this past week is ensuring that access to the football field area is clearly laid out, and means of, you know, exiting from there is also clearly laid out. There's pedestrian spaces already set aside. There's spaces for people who have any kind of limitations where they will need some assistance, either getting to the field or once they're on the field, where they can be, where it would be comfortable for them as well. Obviously, there is a PA system at the field that is being tested to ensure that it is sufficient for the people that would be in attendance, so everyone will be able to hear. There will be microphones available for people who wish to make comments during town meeting. And I've already been asked by a few people in town, will the microphones be sanitized between uses? They're intended not to be touched, but just in case, there will be a process to ensure that they are sanitized before anyone else uses them. So that's first and foremost. There will be chairs that will be provided. But if you wish to bring your own chair, please feel free. Remember, this is on the football field. We can't penetrate the field, so you can't put anything in the ground. But you can certainly bring your chair, make yourself comfortable. We will absolutely ensure that the social distancing is being applied. But for people who want to have a little bit more space, there appears to be enough space there that you can have as much space as you think you need to be safe in that environment. I've had questions about why the 9:00 a.m. start. It's July, friends. And 9:00 a.m. is a good time to start to hopefully avoid the bulk of the summer heat that typically hits us in July. We are also, the Town Administrator and I have talked about how we can make the process as streamlined as possible, combining some of the articles to make them where it's one vote for multiple articles. But that certainly would be, you know, something that the attendees of the town meeting would have a great deal to say about which articles stay in that category or which articles can get pulled out to for further discussion and voted on individual. John, have I covered most of the area?
Yes, I believe you've covered most of the high points. We will provide, as you said, 200 chairs. Right now, the way the layout is structured is we're looking at 10 feet spacing between chairs and with 10-foot aisles that are one directional. So again, as much spacing out as we can get. The main tables up at the front will be very long. There'll be a social distancing up at the front tables as well. Hand sanitizer will be made available. We're also will provide water bottles, two water bottles, or anticipating for every person attending. And I think the key thing, and Mr. Moderator, you mentioned this, is that we will have appropriate close-by handicap parking and an accessible walkway ramp that is being built next week to accommodate anybody with any mobility issues. So I think at this point in time, we are in very good shape for town meeting. I also do, just for the record, want to call out DPW Director Scott Sharptier, who on my side led the coordinating charge between all the public safety, DPW, as well as the school departments to put these plans in. There's a lot of logistics that go into play in terms of traffic flow and pedestrian safety and all that. So I just, Scott's done a fantastic job for us. And at this point in time, we have a venue, I think, that works well. It's outside, which was requested by moderator and the board. And, you know, I think it's as safe as we can be under the circumstances.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just add a couple of other things.
Yes, sir.
Masks will be required at the meeting, okay? Individuals may bring their own masks. There will be masks available if people have a need for a mask. But we want to make sure that we are following all of the CDC guidelines and making this as safe as possible. I've spent the past few days reaching out to other moderators in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to get their input. And I had a quick phone call this afternoon with a moderator from Southborough, and we plan on talking again tomorrow. I'm very curious about what they're doing because what they did, I should say, because it's very similar to ours, and the process is there. As far as questions about how are we going to consolidate some of these articles and what is it all about? For example, if it were, you know, a revolving account type of articles, and we have several of those, putting those all together and making that one collected article that is voted on at one time. Why would we do that? Because it would save us a great deal of time, and certain time is important for all of us during this outdoor town meeting. And secondly, is I want to make sure that it's not any more confusing. I shouldn't say any more confusing. It's not confusing for people who are attending the town meeting. It's a familiar process. It's similar to what we've done in the past. So I think that this is the clearest way to do it without adding a whole lot of new language and changing a lot of the processes that we've used in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. If I could ask a clarifying question. We're asking people to wear masks. Is that throughout the meeting? Or is that only to navigate to their seating at which point they could remove it while they're seated?
Once they have navigated to their seating, they can be, you know, feel free to take their mask off. But if they're going to leave their seating, they have to put the mask back on.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask, I'm sorry, DPW Director Scott Sharptier, is there anything you'd like to add?
So Chairman, no, everything's been pretty well covered. We have adequate masks for all the attending voters, as well as staff members. Plenty of water. We're doing everything we can. We're reaching out to some of our neighboring communities. Southborough, Grafton, we've had recent outdoor town meetings. I believe Berlin's is tonight. So we're doing our best to gather information and learn from our peers.
Thank you. John, you have something?
Yeah, one thing I did want to mention, because I know we've gotten a couple of questions on this. So the bathrooms that are normally at the snack shack, if you were attended a football game or baseball game, soccer up there. So the regular facilities will be open, attended, and cleaned. In addition, on the other side of the field, near the handicap parking and accessible area, there'll also be porta potties there, handicapped accessible porta potties. Those will be cleaned on a regular basis as well. So there'll be bathrooms on either end, on either end of this field with specifically accessible porta potties made available. So again, you can use either one, and we'll have attendees cleaning those on a periodic basis.
Okay, thank you. One other question I had or clarification to make. We've indicated people can bring their own lawn chairs or whatever they would like in place of the seating we would be providing. People, considering it's July and sunny potentially, might want to be bringing some kind of overhead covering. And in that circumstance, as we mentioned, we can't do anything with stakes or anchors or things like that in the field. But if people want to bring something like that for added protection, could you speak to where that might be positioned on the site? So as not to obstruct the view, John?
Sure. So certainly, you know, people can bring like soccer or any kind of sports chair that you'd typically go watch your kids play sports in with a little canopy. Those are probably ideal. But otherwise, you can bring some covering. But we're asking those folks to situate themselves to the back so that they're not blocking anybody's view. So the way it's laid out is there's seating directly in the front of the podiums and to the right and the left, and then behind there is basically open lawn seating. And so people have an umbrella or something, and again, not putting it into the ground because we don't want to damage the irrigation system that's in the field. But asking people if they do have some sort of a covering that they want to use that they set up more towards the back so they're not blocking the view. So again, we're trying to be as reasonable and accommodating folks as we can, given the fact that, you know, we don't want to damage the irrigation system that's in the field.
Thank you, John. Board members, any additional questions? Leslie?
Yeah, thank you. It's great detail in this document. I really like it. I think this is the best alternative. It's, I can tell a lot of work went into this. And I like the fact that we're speaking with other communities about how they plan on doing things or how they did things. So getting back to the masks, they wear them going to their seats. But if they go to and from the porta, I call them porta potties. Porta potties, they need to have the mask on going to and from. Whenever they get up essentially and move about, they need to put the mask back on. Okay.
Yes.
Also, could there be, if there's some sort of documentation going on about this, can we just state that water will be provided? And whether or not it's okay for people to bring their own drinks and food? Can they bring breakfast or anything? Well.
It's not a picnic, but we don't want to get into a situation where we've got a big cleanup here. So no hibachis and, you know, it's not, so, but we'll provide water. But people obviously can bring a beverage, non-alcoholic, of course. It is school grounds and it's 9:00 a.m. so. But they can bring their own beverage of their choosing. The document that is included in your packet is essentially what we're going to put out as part of our public communication. So it'll go out through Town News, it'll be up on the website. We're anticipating, and we're talking a little bit about the timing of this, but we're going to put out a code red notification as well to folks, just letting them know town meeting, you know, is on Saturday, July 11th at 9:00 a.m. at the Algonquin Regional High School Football Stadium. So we'll be pushing all that information out. But essentially, the documents that are in your packet tonight with the detail, our intent is to make those available to the public. And, you know, the things about the mask, the water, the chairs, hand sanitizers, parking, all that stuff is laid out. Once people get to the location, we'll help have adequate public safety staff to direct them where to park in terms of whether or not they need handicap parking or just regular parking. So the circulation will be handled by police and fire. And DPW put appropriate directional barriers and things like that up. So want to make sure people that are lined up, there's appropriate separation between pedestrians and any motoring traffic, things of that nature. So those are all the details aren't necessary and missed. But we will be putting that detail, the document explaining all of these things, we'll be making that public.
All right. Yes, Leslie?
Mr. Chair, just one other question. I don't personally see this happening, but what if there was enough conversation at town meeting that it got to be, let's say, 1:00 p.m.? Are we going to just stay until we finish? Would we try to come back the next day? What would be, that would be worst-case scenario, obviously, but I did want to throw that out there.
Up to the moderator.
Fred?
You know, my intent is that we stay on track and move as quickly as we possibly can, but still having everyone having an opportunity to say what they need to say. If we are running that late, I don't want to have it multiple days. I think that that would just be absolute chaos. So we will do what we have to do to get the work done. But I think by consolidating many of the articles and by letting people know that, you know, presentations will be at a minimum, if any at all, and then really we're there to do the work the town meeting does. And, you know, it will be, you know, a lot of the extras that we've experienced for having an indoor town meeting. I'm going to try to minimize those.
Okay. That sounds great, and I totally agree with everything you just said. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Other questions? Tim?
Just from a logistics standpoint, do we have enough people or do we need volunteers for anything? Is there going to be enough staff to handle traffic and directing people once they're on site?
Through the Chair? Yes, I mean, just think of Apple Fest. You know, we have volunteers. We have some volunteers, but it'll, as far as the traffic control, that will be the police. So we're confident between DPW, police, fire, and some staff that will have, we should be fine. We also have, as always, the staff that handles the check-ins for folks to register for town meeting and so forth. So we're anticipating we should be, we should be fine.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And along that same line, counters, if necessary, to take counts of votes since we're a little more far-flung.
Yep, tell us, we'll be there.
Yep, very good. Any other questions? Julianne, you had a hand up, yep.
Yeah, I was wondering if, what you would think about having people email in their questions to reduce the amount of people coming up to the microphone? Do you think that would help at all?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, yes, please, Fred, yep.
I think from that standpoint, if you're mailing in, emailing in questions, the difficulty is you'll probably be out of sync with what's going on in the discussions taking place. And I would be in fear of possibly someone missing, having their comments be missed because we have gone beyond that particular article. So, you know, it sounds like a great idea, but I think will be so real-time that that could have some flaws.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Leslie?
Yeah, you mentioned counters. I would assume, I'm guessing, that they would be told to wear masks as they move about through the crowds to count. Okay, just wanted to be sure about that. Thank you.
And I'll just ask, at what point do we anticipate having some of this detailed logistics and everything, like up on the town website, in a place where people can easily reference and get a quick snapshot of all of these details?
I would think in the next day or so. So I mean, really just want to run this stuff by the board, make sure everybody's in agreement in terms of the approach. And then we'll clean things up a little bit and get them posted. And as I said, we'll be doing some more active, proactive outreach in terms of getting the word out there. But as far as just getting the basic information up on the website, that's something that can be done very quickly.
Okay, thank you, John. Any other questions? Julianne?
Yeah, you know what? I brought this up last time, and I do still feel kind of strongly that if it is very, very warm, and we're even getting health advisories from the Department of Public Health, that we should have a heat date. And I just want to express that one more time.
Fred, would you care to?
Certainly, you know, I think a heat date is difficult because if we're starting at 9:00 a.m., and I don't recall it being much more than the 70s at 9:00 a.m., and that is reasonably comfortable. So by the time we get to what is, you know, an advisory with heat, it would probably be mid-morning at the very earliest. So I don't know how we could implement a heat day and do it in a logical process where we haven't started the meeting yet. You know, a nightmare would be to have everyone there, and then at 9:15, we decide it's too hot, and everyone has to go home. If we're going to make a change, we need to make it early enough before people leave their homes.
Right. Yeah, I agree. I just, you know, sometimes when we're in the midst of a prolonged, serious heat wave, we might have enough time to, you know, to consider doing that. Just, so that's, I just want to put that out there one more time.
Okay.
We certainly have the contingency date of the following week, July 18th. Certainly in the case of rain that's sufficient to wash it out. It's, yeah, a little bit of a different circumstance with heat. It's a combination of temperature and humidity and circumstances such as that. It's difficult to perhaps define some specific threshold or metric where, you know, it's a go, no-go. But I think for what we're trying to do here with a 9:00 a.m. start with a condensed warrant, to the extent we're able to do that, to try to expedite how we're handling the articles, I think we certainly can make a best effort to try to get through at least the necessary business with the finance articles of town meeting, either budget approvals or deferrals of some spending articles. Any other questions? Any other comments? Seeing none, okay, thank you very much. Fred, we appreciate your help with that one, and perhaps you would stay on for another item coming up?
Absolutely.
This brings us to reports. Julianne?
Yes, thank you. So town elections are June 30th. That's in a week and a day. And I just, I hope as many people come out as can or have gotten their absentee ballots already. And as usual, I'm going to ask, is the electronic sign that we have in town could be posted on the Town Common, reminding people about town election? And that's it for me tonight.
Okay, thank you, Julianne. Speaking of the signs, someone mentioned to me that I think the Lions electronic sign had still been showing the June 22nd date for town meeting. So I don't know who's over at the high school right now, but they're not finding a town meeting going on there. So I don't know who's responsible for updating that, but I'd like to get that updated if it's still incorrect. Leslie, report.
Yes, I just wanted to remind people also to please check the Northborough Food Pantry Facebook page and also nfp.org to find out what the current needs are there. That is a need that never ends. They've been doing a fantastic job and serving a lot of our community during this COVID crisis. Also, a reminder about the Louise Hool Annual Town Cleanup, which is this coming Thursday through Sunday. If you go to the town website, you can locate the information there and sign up and pick a spot. There are two locations where you can pick up bags and gloves, contact free, and take care of what you need to do sometime over the weekend, and leave the bags out at those sites. And the DPW will come around on Monday and pick those up. And we very much appreciate that, Scott. Thank you very much. And also a reminder to vote. If you haven't done mail-in, please consider voting on June 30th, 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Millican Middle School. It will be safe, protocols will be followed, and I strongly encourage everyone to vote. It's very, very important. Thank you very much. That is my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Tim?
I just wanted to thank... I just wanted to thank Fred George, Scott Sharpentier, John Cudair, and everybody else that's been involved with making town meeting happen in a way that, that fits the needs of the, the community. I know a lot of work went into it, it's, it's very much appreciated. And just remind everybody again, vote on June 30th. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Don, I'm going to interject here for a moment. For one thing, I'm just going to make an administrative update here. People have already, in this meeting, met the Board of Selectmen, Administrator John Cudair, Town Moderator Fred George, and DPW Director Scott Sharpentier. Also on this call, our Finance Director Jason Little, Police Chief William Liver, and Fire Chief David Parenti, who's also our Technical Zoom co-host here to manage this meeting. And we also have Northborough Cable Access Television connected as well. So just acknowledging those folks. At this juncture, I just would like to make a little bit of an acknowledgement to Don Rand. Don is a Dick there? Dick has something to present to Don. This is Don's last meeting on the Board of Selectmen, and she had an item to present to her. As you can see in Don's view screen there, it's a plaque with a gavel and a inscription that includes the Northborough Town Seal. And on the inscription, it says, "Presented this day, June 22nd, 2020, by the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the Town of Northborough, with deepest appreciation and heartfelt thanks to Don Bremen Rand, in recognition of sustained and extraordinary dedication, leadership, counsel, and service. Appropriations Committees 1971 through 1993, Board of Selectmen 1993 through 2020." Don, this is a record that, that nobody's going to surpass in the town of Northborough. Your record of service is just extraordinary, starting back when you were, I believe, 19 years old, first joining the Appropriations Committee. And for most people, you know, 20-odd years on a committee like that, that's an entire civic career. Don was only just getting warmed up, so stepped up to the Board of Selectmen, another couple of decades of service there. It's just a really, really very, very unusual, very extraordinary. We appreciate all of your service over these last, even just across this last decade, Don's been involved with the, the new senior center construction, the 250th celebration for the Town of Northborough, the Fire Station Building Committee, which has been progressing. These are just, you know, the most recent things that Don has contributed to, and we certainly appreciate and acknowledge and honor all of that service, all of that contribution. So on behalf of the Board of Selectmen in the Town of Northborough, thank you for everything you've done, and it's just very, very much appreciated. I'd like to actually go back through the Board of Selectmen for a second round of report. Julian, would you care to comment?
Yes, I, I, it's just a heartfelt thank you to Don. It's, um, it's a lot of time that, that people don't even, I think, understand, and we're very appreciative of all, all of your sacrifices. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Leslie?
First of all, I can't even believe this is happening right now. Don, I'm sure that when you started that you never would have guessed that we'd be having your last meeting on a computer screen. How odd is that? It's funny to think about that. And I, I have to say, you know, when I first started, I was actually on the school committee for four years, and I then ran for the Board of Selectmen, and I was a little intimidated by Don Rand. Don Rand was famous, and I thought, oh, my goodness, I'm going to be working with Don Rand. And it was very exciting to, to see how you work and to see how strong you feel about Northborough. And the points that stand out to me about you is that you have always cared so much about our community. You've never wavered from that. You have always acted with integrity. You've always spoken genuinely about your thoughts and opinions on matters. You have always been true to yourself. And you've never talked, just to hear yourself talk. You listen patiently and calmly, and you offer your thoughts when you feel it necessary. And I think that's a very important attribute to have. And you've always had a very calm and knowledgeable demeanor, and I think that that is, is quite important. I think that people need to see that you don't have to get super worked up, that you listen, you observe, and you come to a reasonable conclusion, and you state that when necessary. And that's always how I've seen you at meetings, and it's always struck me that way, that you've always, always been very consistent with how you've handled town matters, and you've done all your research, you've come to meetings prepared, and have spoken so well about things. So I admire you very much. I think you're a wonderful role model for people in town, a wonderful role model for women who want to be involved on boards and committees. And I really can't say enough about you. I just, I'm going to miss you very much. You're, you're a wonderful human being, and I admire you for all your years of service and commitment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Tim?
As, as a newer member on, on the board, I've only had the, the chance to work with Don for the last couple of years. And one of the things that I've, I've learned since I've been on the board is when you're on this board, you, you, you can't hide behind things. When, when you, when you speak your mind, when you, when you stand up for something, it is out there for the community to see. And to be able to do that for, for the length of time, Don, that, that you've been able to do that says an incredible amount about your character and your integrity. I don't, I don't think, I think people see through people that don't have that pretty quick, and I don't think you would have ever been able to serve as long as you have if you, if you weren't one of the most honest people. So I thank you very much for all the service and all that you've done for the community. I was trying to think of things that you were involved in, but I think it's actually, it, it makes it harder. It's almost easier to think of things that you haven't been involved. Every day, you've touched almost everything in town, so it's, it's, uh, it's quite the accomplishment, and, and it's been, been great serving on the board with you for the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Like to go to a couple of staff members here. Would you like, John?
I would love to say a few words. First of all, for those of you that were trying to count the years on the plaque, that's 49 years of uninterrupted service to the Town of Northborough on a board or committee. That is unprecedented. And I remember when I was appointed Don as a new town administrator about 12 years ago, the board very wisely decided to make Don the chair to keep an eye on the new guy and make sure he got out of the gate in the right direction. And, and I just want to say, Don, you've always been that guiding, that guiding force. And anytime I had an issue or concern, or I needed history on an issue to, to get a full understanding of it, you were always there, you always had that, you were always level, even keeled. And, and the thing that matters to me most as a 22-year resident in the community, I know you've always had the best interest of this community at heart. Everything you've ever done has been in the best interest of this community. So for that, as a resident and as a town administrator, just thank you for that. It, it, it goes, people just don't realize what that kind of service means in that, in that duration. It's a lot of missed nights with your families, a lot of aggravation, but it's had a tremendous impact on the community, it's had a tremendous impact on all the people that have served on the boards and committees and worked with you over the years. So personally, for me, it's, it made all the difference when I started here, and I just, I just want to say thank you. And I'm going to miss you tremendously. I'm going to miss you.
Thank you, John. I'll miss you, too.
Thank you, John. Chief Parenti, care to add a comment?
Sure, I have to follow, I have to follow that, right? You know, you never know when you come into a town as a, as an outsider, who, who are you going to run into? What the board's going to be like? Are they going to treat you well? Are they not going to treat you well? And I have to tell you, this board, since I've been here, has treated public safety incredibly well. And in particular, the one story I'm going to relate about Don that I still think about quite often is last year, year before, when we finally got the, the first step of the fire station through. And, and I wasn't, I was never sure about, you know, how friendly and huggy Don was, because I'm always a huggy guy, you know, but we got it, we got the vote, went through. Meeting was over, I walked up, and Don walked right up to me and gave me a big hug and said, "We did it." And I, I really appreciate that. That meant so much to me. I passed it on to my guys. It meant so much to them. And without question, public safety is going to miss you. And you're not going anywhere. You'll still be around. Well, well, you know, if you need us, we'll come see you. But, Don, you made the transition much easier than it could have, and always terrific, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be odd going to Selectmen's meetings or reading about anything about the Board of Selectmen and not seeing Don's name there. Having been a longtime town employee, I've been to many Selectmen's meetings, and Don's always there, a stable force on the board. I've only been chief since 19, yeah, 19, I wish, 2016. And all I can say is that the support that I have gotten has been fantastic from Don, and I appreciate that greatly.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Finance Director Jason Little?
How, how can I add to anything that anybody's already said? I would just say that, Don, I appreciate your, I always admire your, your strength, your consistency and your leadership for the town, and thank you for all these years of service. It's
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. DPW Director Scott Sharpentier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, the board has been fantastic to work with in Northborough, having the level of stability on the board that Don, you've, you've given the residents in Northborough. They're, they're blessed and lucky to have that. You know, I, I live in another community, we have our own board, and I've worked with a lot of communities as a consultant. Never did I see that, that, that level of stick-to-it-ness that you've given the residents of Northborough. So they're lucky to have you, and I, I have been as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And finally, Town Moderator Fred George.
Well, first and foremost, Don, we have spent a lifetime together. I remember when Don was on Appropriations Committee. I remember when Don decided to run for Selectmen. And, you know, during that timeframe, there were a lot of great ups and downs. As, as all of the members of the Board of Selectmen know, it isn't always downhill. Sometimes you have to push it back uphill again as well. And Don, you have been the rock. And just when we thought the world was crumbling, you would always, it's a, it's always a one-liner from Don, you know, and, and it's almost like, you know, she has a, a little book with all these one-liners in them, and she, and she pulls one out at the perfect time and, and makes a statement. So, so Don, you are a gem. And I will, I will tell you that I think the Town of Northborough loves you. I don't think. I know the Town of Northborough loves you as much as you love the Town of Northborough. And I think everyone in this community, if they don't realize it, they need to be informed that, you know, there are situations where, when, when war starts, there's always that one person who goes running toward the enemy. And in Northborough, that person's name is Don Rand. So, Don, congratulations. Wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you, Fred George.
Thank you, Fred. And I'll conclude by saying, Don, I moved to town in 96, and you've been a fixture on the board for that entire time. I've spanning my entire entry into and succession through service on town boards and committees. In 2014, when there was a vacancy, and I was finally persuaded to run for the board, I talked to each of the Selectmen to get their individual opinions and feedback. Don, I think we met at Linguini's for lunch one day. And I think it was your opinion that I was most uncertain about. And at that lunch, you were extremely supportive, and it made me feel so much more comfortable with proceeding along that path. It's been a pleasure to serve with you. It's been a pleasure to be a election running mate with you, and I'm certainly going to miss you and certainly wish you all the best for the future. Your service has been exemplary and much appreciated, and I just look forward to seeing you back and involved one way or another sometime in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. So I guess I get to speak now. I didn't expect all these wonderful things being said about. I want to thank a few people. I want to thank the numerous Board of Selectmen people that I've served with. They've been great Selectmen, and it brought so much to the Town of Northborough. There's one great board, Fred George, you were on it, that if there was something thrown out there that could be thrown out there, we dealt with. So I always call the Board of Selectmen that served with me, Bill Henrys, Fred George, Eddie Davidian, and the kid, Steve Kelker. Little remembered at this point in time, but they were an incredible board, and we went through so much together. I'll always remember them. But there's other great Selectmen I've dealt with, including all of you. I've dealt with three great town administrators as a Selectman. I have the probably only history in the Town of Northborough, besides maybe Bill Liver, of being in the Town of Northborough and dealing under every town administrator. I started with Peter Boyer in the day, so. But the past three administrators have all brought wonderful strengths to the Town of Northborough. John Cudair, your fiscal strength and your leadership is unrivaled. So, but I would need to thank the three of them. I need to thank two fires, two chiefs, the police chief and the fire chief, for the stability they've brought to their departments. I can't say enough about Chief Liver and his rapport with the Board of Selectmen. It's been incredible. And Chief Parenti, you make me laugh all the time. So, and your men adore you, and I think that that's been a nice, nice thing to see. I want to thank one person that I think gets overlooked a lot, and that's Diane Whackel. Diane Whackel has been the strength behind me and the Board of Selectmen, always there, working behind the scenes, making sure we're prepared, making sure that she's always committed to whatever we have that we want to know or we want to do. And Diane Whackel, I think I am going to miss you so much. So the last people I want to thank, my family. Because there are, as Jason said, or somebody said, the nights where, you're not at home, you miss out on your kid getting the principal scholarship award because you're at a meeting, and they understand that. So Dick and Brad, thank you both. So that concludes my report with a thank you, and I do intend to stay involved, so thank you all.
Okay. Everybody's recovered. We can proceed to public comment. I'll first explain for public comment, we seem to have a number of people connected by Zoom, none by phone. Through the Zoom application, you should be able to raise your hand if you wish to be acknowledged and speak. Public comment per person is limited to three minutes. So if you have anything you'd like to offer, this would be the time. And we have Andy Zhao. Yeah, hold on just a second, Andy. And we're bringing you in. If you could state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Andy Zhao. I'm at 10 Brendan Drive, Northborough, Massachusetts. First, I just want to say congratulations and thank you to Don again for First, I just want to say congratulations and thank you to Don again for such a long esteemed career. Yeah, thank you again. Going on to the, the town, the town meeting, I'm hearing these phrases thrown around such as, you know, the condensing or the bundling of warrant articles and the decrease of presentation time. And I'm just wondering, I'm kind of concerned about the town meeting aspect of the town meeting. What kind of steps can we do to make sure that due diligence is given to each warrant and we're not just going through the motions?
Sure. If I could, I'll see John. Why don't you go ahead, John?
One of the things that we're, we're doing, because it's an outdoor venue, we can't do PowerPoint presentations on a screen. So one of the things that we're doing is trying to make the presentations and the materials available in, in written form. We're trying to make them available ahead of time, but certainly at town meeting, there will be presentations that presenters can refer to. But we're going to try to make the handouts a little bit more robust. So that's one of the ways that we'll be able to do that. Just one other thing I might mention, some of the consent agenda that the moderator referred to, we have, there are a number of articles that we're going to be passing over simply because the modified budget that's been approved by every member of every board and committee at this point in time. For instance, we're, we're going to be passing over several of the capital articles. So that explanation can be, can be made in, in one presentation and, and a number of those articles could be passed over. So those are just a couple of the ways.
Okay, thank you. Could you clarify what you meant by the condensing or the bundling of the warrant articles?
Fred, would you like to address that?
Certainly, I would like to do that. Mr. Zhao, when, when we say condensing, that may not have been the right way of describing it. Really what we're doing is, as, as the town administrator already mentioned, is putting like articles together that, you know, an example would be revolving accounts. We're required at every town meeting to renew that revolving account. So if we have five of those different revolving accounts, why shouldn't we put those together in one discussion, one article, opposed to having those five individual articles presented and discussed? So that's one example of trying to make the process more precise. I won't use the word condensed. Other ways would be if there are similar types of, of, of articles that are, for example, articles that are used in capital equipment and in the same department, the possibility of putting them all together. And not necessarily condensing, but saying articles, there are five articles that have to deal with new equipment for the DPW. And the equipment is, and it will be mentioned exactly what that equipment is and what, what the price tag of that equipment is. But there'll be one vote and maybe it'll be five different items. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. So just to clarify, if we wanted to split, you say the five different warrant articles for the DPW, if, will we be able to split them if we had enough agreement on, on splitting the, the bundle?
The process is, is at the beginning of the meeting. I will go through all of the items that have been put together and read off what they are, giving all of the town meeting attendees the opportunity to say, hold. If they feel that there's something that they are feeling pretty strongly about having more discussion about that one particular item. And we would set that article aside and, and go through. And then, once we've had agreement that all the articles that I mentioned that are bundled together, and there's been no hold put on those, we would vote on putting them together and voting for those as a group. The ones that have been put on hold, we go through and have a very quick discussion about each one of those. And, you know, simple questions would be, why is it important that we, we discuss this further? And is there any new information that we need to add? Those sorts of things I would ask and go through that way. So no, the town meeting attendees will still have some say about what we're discussing and how we discuss it.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And I have a hand up for Apple Lynn. Hold on for just a second, please. And Apple, can you state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Apple Lynn. I live on fifty-nine School Street. And I just want to take a moment and thank Don for all her hard work. It's amazing to see someone as, as achieved as you to serve on our board. So thank you so much. So I just had a question referring to the last one. So when you mean like putting like articles together, will we know that beforehand? Or is that something that's going to happen during the meeting? Like, is this information available online?
I'm not, as soon as we put this together, certainly the information about the new and, and revised warrant should be up on the, on the town website. But it will also be discussed at the very beginning of the meeting so that there are no big surprises for people in attendance.
Okay, so this indicates that there will be a new warrant that's like different from the one that's already currently on the website, correct?
Revised.
Revised. Yeah. So when, so do you have like an approximate date on when we can expect this revised warrant?
Oh, that, I would refer to the town administrator on that one.
Yeah, I did, maybe, maybe a little bit of point through the chair, a point of clarification is, what we're essentially talking about here is a consent agenda. So this is how most towns or many towns do this already. They'll, they have what are often referred to as housekeeping articles that they would put on the consent agenda and those would be approved without taking them up individually. There is the opportunity to combine, like for instance, the, the operating budgets. Overall, the general fund consists of, you know, many smaller budgets, general government, the various schools and so forth. There's a possibility of, but, but overall, it is a general fund budget that has one overall impact on the community. So possibility of putting that together. So the moderator and I need to have some additional discussions because I'm not sure it's, it's his town meeting. The warrant is the warrant. How town meeting approaches the warrant by collapsing things or passing over things, that's, that's really what we're talking about. The, the other thing is, there will be a revised warrant in the sense that when we posted the warrant back in March, March twenty-third, we had to meet that deadline to get it posted by, by charter. But since then, we've also, because of COVID nineteen, we've had to go back and revise a lot of our financial articles and our capital articles. So I've been working with the finance director to try to put together a handout for town meeting that, that helps explain the changes because this is a little bit more complicated than we normally would see. Typically, the article that is posted in the warrant, by and large, is what goes before town meeting and the motion for that article is, is basically the same. This time around, on all the operating budgets, we know those motions are going to be very different than the posted articles. So we're trying to put together a handout that's going to, to explain this as best we can. So we're, we're working on that, on that right now.
Okay, so is there like still like an approximate date where we can expect these revised articles?
Again, we're working on the motions, you know. I would certainly, the, the goal would to be to have this stuff largely put together at least a week before town meeting. So people have a chance to, to see it.
Okay, that's perfect. And I also had a question for the police chief.
Yes, sure. Proceed.
Um, so in the articles that were posted in March, there is a request for two new police cruisers. And that's coming out of our free cash. I was wondering if you could provide us an update on the current status of the cruisers that we currently have?
Well, cruisers that we have are roadworthy because we have a very strict, or our replacement schedule is based on best practice. And it was actually commented on in our staffing study that was done back in two thousand sixteen, or written up in two thousand sixteen. We keep our cruisers for approximately four years, a hundred thousand miles. And then we trade them in because that's when we get the best trade-in value. We are, I'm looking to replace one cruiser now that's five years old and has a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on it. And that does not include idle time. And the cars run approximately sixteen hours a day. And that's three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So idle time actually adds about twenty-five to thirty percent more wear and tear on the car than the odometer actually shows. So of the eight, nine Mark Patrol cruisers that we have, two of them are a year old. And then the rest of the fleet goes down there accordingly to two thousand and fifteen, where we're, we'll be looking to, you know, ultimately, we, we have a replacement schedule that has been steady for years at two cruisers, one year and three cruisers the next. And that allows us to keep the cars at about a hundred thousand miles and maximize the trade-in. But that is also because we, we purchased the cars with extended warranties to upwards of a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles. And when those cars go off the warranty, they become very expensive to start fixing. So as a result of the practice that we have now, our maintenance costs have stayed stable for years. And we've not had an increase in the maintenance budget. Anything else I can ask, answer for?
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, so just, so it's, so the two that are being requested are on schedule and that, and that's to ensure that the current police cruisers, they don't, I guess it becomes too expensive to repair them versus like, then getting like a new one?
No, we're just trying to keep up with our maintenance, our replacement schedule. And that's, I believe, we're not going to be looking for two cruisers anyway. So perhaps one.
All right, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hand up, Maryam Ibrahimy. Hi, Maryam.
Hi.
State your name and address, please.
My name's Maryam Ibrahimy. I live on ninety-two Bay Drive. So first off, I also just wanted to thank Don for her dedication to this town. You're definitely an inspiration for youth in this town to participate in local government. So my question was about clarifications on the warrant. Article thirteen talks about the feasibility study. And I understand that this is a contentious issue in our town, has been in the past. I'm also aware that repairs in the current town hall have been put aside in the past because it's a possibility that the town hall could be moved. So I guess I'm wondering, in terms of moving back to the old town hall, how much would that cost? I know that in the warrant, there's a hundred thousand dollars that is to be appropriated from free cash to figure that out. So do we know how much it would cost to actually buy back or use the old town hall? And then if that is cheaper, then why would we spend more money to figure out what to use like clips? I'm just curious.
Okay, thank you very much, Maryam. John, I'm going to turn that question over to you.
Yeah, it might be helpful to explain what a feasibility study is because it, it sounds like there's some confusion on that. So anytime you do a building project, you want to do a feasibility study. Feasibility study does a number of things. The first thing it does, it looks at the programmatic space needs of your operation. So, so you know exactly how much space you, you really need. The second thing it does, it looks at, it reviews options. And so typically, a good example is we completed the Lincoln Street Building Project a couple of years ago. And the state process requires you to look at renovation addition, where you are building new or, I'm sorry, renovation, renovation addition or building new. And so the feasibility study looks at all of those options. But regardless, the bulk of the feasibility is done on having an architect look at the, again, the programmatic space needs. And then, once you start to look at what your options are, you then need to have, develop a conceptual plan. So the bulk of the money again is spent in a conceptual plan wherever you're going. Then those plans are put out for cost estimates. So in order to make an informed decision, you look at all of your options. You have to first know exactly what you need in terms of space. Then you look at your options, then you get cost estimates for those options. And essentially, what you do is you come to a preferred design concept. So that's what a feasibility study is. And we've done that on every building project that we've ever done. And, and that's the normal process for doing these things. I think some of the information that's being put out there in the community isn't quite accurate, or folks don't understand what, what we're doing. But once you do get a preferred concept or preferred design option, the other thing is when it comes to a building project, typically it goes through conceptual design, schematic design, construction documents. And then you bid the project out. Now, that's a continuum without real clear distinct spaces. So depending on what your concept or your preferred design is, you can develop, delve into that more with the architect and develop that concept more fully. So that's what a feasibility study is.
Important to, to note there that there is no predetermined decision here. Part of the feasibility study is to decide, is to understand what the options are and what the costs involved are before the decision's made.
Right. So if I could just, I'm sorry, through the chair, I could just say, so, so to answer your question of how much it would cost, I don't know. That's in part, part of why you do a feasibility study, to get that information so that you're making an informed decision. The feasibility study report at the end also informs you in terms of the direction you're going to go, assuming you would then move to the next phase, which would be to seek additional funding either for design development and/or construction. In order to do that, you need information to base that request on. Otherwise, we're literally, we're just making up numbers. So this is about getting the information in order to move the process forward. It's the only way to do it, short of just, literally just making up a number.
Okay, so do you know how long this feasibility study will take?
That's a good question. It depends. Typically, a feasibility study will take a cycle, like you'll get from one town meeting to the next if, if, if all thing, if everything goes well and you don't encounter a pandemic or something like that. So.
Okay, so it should take about a year to figure this out?
Well, the cycle to come back to town meeting, but it'll, it, again, the feasibility study itself, you know, it would typically be about a six-month process or so. And then, after you get the information, it's about digesting it and communicating it to the boards and committees and to the community at large. But typically, from town meeting to town meeting, which is a year cycle, that's the time it would take to do a feasibility study, get the information communicated to the, to the residents and the boards and to make a decision or to start to build consensus in order to make a decision. And I'll just say, one, one, one final point I'd like to make, as, as the person who oversaw the library building project, the senior center building project, and the twenty-five and a half million dollar Lincoln Street Building Project. This is one of the things that we do very well in this town. And one of the reasons why we do well and the projects come out on the other side, they, they get approved with, typically with overwhelming support. And they come out the other side on budget or under budget and on time is because we planned well. And the first step in that plan is a good feasibility study.
Okay, that's good to know because I am aware that the old town hall building had a forty-year ownership and it's coming down in two years to make a decision. So I was just curious how long the feasibility study would take. Thank you.
That's why, that's why this request is basically timed to cycle with that ending lease. So last thing we're going to do is have the building come back to us and not be clear about what we want to do with it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Maryam. Next up, Anthony Zaitin. And could you state your name and address, please?
I'm so sorry. It's Laura Zaitin and I didn't change the name when I dialed in. Thank you.
Okay, yep.
So Laura's
Address, please, Laura. Yep.
Seventeen Franklin Circle.
Yep.
Just a couple of quick comments. Number one, thank you so much, Don. I'm so thankful for what you've done for our town. And I hope that other people will take that same initiative to serve. The second thing that I wanted to mention is to please keep the Zoom meeting accessibility available after COVID is complete. This has really been a huge asset for me and for a lot of these families that can't come to the meetings during the night. And the last question I wanted to ask is, who is going to make the decision about which town meeting warrant articles will be bundled and how? And is that going to be done in a public meeting format?
Fred George, Town Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Laura, I think what will happen is, is the town administrator and I will get together. And we'll talk about the possibility of what articles could possibly be, be grouped together. And, and then, once we've gone through that, then possibly having some information piece that would go out to let people know that.
So there's not going to be a public meeting to review what articles are being bundled? Am I correct in understanding that?
Well, I think the, the, the point is that the articles that would logically go together in some sense would be proposed to be bundled. Well, I think the, the, the point is that, um, the, the articles that would logically go together in some sense would be proposed to be bundled into consent agendas. At town meeting, we will go through those bundled sets of articles. And people will have an opportunity to extract an article if there's something that they want to treat separately.
Well, I just, I, I believe that each of those articles are important for their own unique reasons. And I'm, I would like to be able to understand the bundling procedure in a public format, if we can do that ahead of time. And I know that the selectmen have discussed. Articles at length beforehand, so I don't want to overstep that. If, if we can do so at all possible.
I, I think it's, you know, certainly the intention to communicate what the potential bundles would be. I don't think we're going to go through a public input process to make that decision, uh, about what the bundling structure would be. But at town meeting, people will have the opportunity to extract articles for individual attention, if that is the will of town meeting.
I understand what you're saying. And I appreciate that, but I do worry that it might end up. Coming back to bite us if there's not an adequate amount of time to review and, so.
If I could just explain, uh, the, the entire purpose of doing that is to try to expedite. Town meeting to shorten the duration and to address concerns people have about being gathered together in large groups for a long period of time. So, that's the entire purpose of doing that, it's not something we've ever done before. Uh, at town meeting, and, and, and that's the motivation for, for going in that direction.
So will the moderator and the town administrator be making decisions on the bylaws for other boards as well in this consolidation bundling process?
There is no, uh. There is no, uh, uh, treatment, as far as I'm aware, uh, for zoning articles.
Okay.
The planning board has considered whether or not they wanted to, uh, defer those to a fall town meeting or postpone them. They had that discussion at one of their meetings last week, I believe. And came to the conclusion that, uh. They didn't know that a fall town meeting would be held. And if it were held, they couldn't be certain of having a quorum in attendance to address those articles. And so they chose to keep those articles on this town meeting more.
Okay, and last question, so will a final warrant be updated to include the bundles as they're gonna look? Before town meeting, I think you said a week in advance, but is there gonna be the full detail for that, you know, with enough time to be prepared with questions?
Articles, the articles themselves are not changed, other than whatever the, the final numbers are due to the revised budget. So the articles themselves are unchanged, it's only the bundling structure that really needs to be added here.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you very much for your comments. And, uh, um. Apple, I have you again, uh. I'm going to call on you, but typically, uh, people are, you know, given one opportunity to, to, uh, speak in public comment. We do have to move the meeting along, I'm gonna bring you back in. Here we go.
Alright, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I actually have a specific question for the town administrator, so you mentioned previously about the feasibility study. Can you just go through step by step what you have envisioned for the feasibility study for the town hall?
Um, okay, I think I just covered it, but again, feasibility study is you hire an architect. The architect does a programmatic need assessment of, of the space needs of the operations. Then you review options, renovate, uh, build new, in this case, we have the option to go to the, uh, potential, the old town hall and it reverts back to us. Uh, you look at those options, um, you, uh, develop cost estimates. And that helps you define a preferred option, you focus on the preferred option, and typically you would move into schematic design on the preferred option. And then come back to a subsequent town meeting to seek either additional funding to fully develop the design and or construction, uh, documents.
Okay, so it'll be, we'll look at the old town hall and for Main Street, and then we'll look at renovations for the current one and then potential building a new one.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much. A number of people here on attendees on Zoom, any, uh, anyone else would like to offer public comment, please raise your hand. Going once. Going twice. Sold. Thank you all very much, we appreciate your participation. And now, uh, new business, um. Item number one, discussion regarding statement on Black Lives Matter, and, uh, I think we'll have. Selectman Kalen and, uh, town moderator Fred George speaking to this, Selectman Kalen, would you like to start?
Sure, um. I just wanted to, uh, read a, a statement, um, from the Board of Selectmen. Today is June twenty-second, twenty twenty, and unthinkably, this board in this community needs to make a statement condemning racism. The fact that it is twenty twenty and we still need to make official statements condemning racism speaks to the fact. That the United States has not yet found equality for all. Unforgivably, that is where we are as a society. The Northborough Board of Selectmen officially condemns without question racism and discrimination in all forms. Racism is a cancer that destroys the moral fiber of society. Racism is a crime against humanity. Racism is unacceptable. In addition, the Northborough Board of Selectmen support all the peaceful protesters involved in the Black Lives Matters movement. And this board unequivocally believes that black lives matter. It is twenty twenty and it is heartbreaking that the state, the statement needs to be made. Not only in Northborough, but in all communities across the country. But statements are no longer enough. An African American woman who lives in Northborough asked an incredibly important and powerful question. She asked, when I go to town hall. Why does no one look like me? Why, when I go to the police station, does nobody look like me? And why are there no female police officers? And the truth is, it's not just town hall. It's not just the police department. This is true of almost all departments in the town of Northborough. Northborough is a wonderful community filled with good people, but we have to be better. Northborough will be better. Statements are important, but actions lead to change. In addition to condemning racism and discrimination, this board is proposing the following actions. One, establishment of a diversity inclusion committee. This committee will be composed of town department leaders, community leaders and residents. The committee will be tasked with improving the diversity and inclusion in all town departments. Creating and delivering diversity and inclusion programs for residents and business owners. And collaborating with school boards on diversity and inclusion curriculum. Over the next two months, the mission of this committee will be established, the membership defined. And have the first meeting no later than October first, twenty twenty. Second, require that diversity and inclusion training and courses be part of all staff professional development. The purpose of this training is to build a more diverse culture in our town. In our town government and services and learn that as a community, we need to be anti-racist. We are all in this together, it will not be easy. But change is needed and necessary. We will be better, Northborough will be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, Fred, would you like to offer some comment?
Um, no real comment at this time, I just think, uh, a lot of effort went into the statement. Uh, and, uh, I, I think it's an opportunity, as, as Tim had mentioned. Many organizations and municipalities come up with these great statements. They read them once, everyone feels real good about it. Then they put that statement away and nothing happens. Uh, so I'm pleased that there are some action items attached to the statement, so that there's a way to measure the progress. And, and make sure that Northborough truly does move forward.
Thank you, Fred. And Tim, could you just, uh, comment, uh, as to, um, the participation you had, uh, for developing this statement?
Yeah, absolutely, I, I would like to thank, um, Fred George, um, Virginia George and Reverend Elaria Schmidt. For their input and feedback, um, on the statement, you know, it's, it's important, um. That it was a collaboration, um, with people in, in the community and. I'm very, um, proud of the way it came out.
Thank you. Uh, board members, uh, comment? Leslie?
Yeah, I, I like the, um, I like the way this is written, Tim. Fred in Virginia. And I, I like the spirit of it, I, I like the fact that it's not just a, you know, just a narrative. A couple paragraphs, end of story, and I agree with Fred that it's nice to see action items too, not just a simple statement. Of, of, uh, how we feel about this here, so nicely done. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, anyone else? Julia? Uh, you're muted, Julia.
I'd just like to thank Tim and, and the Georges and, and Reverend Schmidt, um, for their, for. Coming up with this statement and I echo Leslie and that it's, um, it's wonderful to see some action items, so. Uh, thank you for all your hard work. Important, thank you.
Thank you, Julia. And I'll just add, uh, add my support, uh, I know that, uh, members of the community may have felt that this is. You know, slowing coming from, uh, from the town, uh, from the board and, uh. We wanted to make sure we had something that, uh. Had the right. Tone to it and also had some substance to it in the sense as, as Fred observed that, uh. It's not simply a statement that you read and feel good about and put aside, you have something, uh, some kind of action item or something associated to, to try to move forward. So, uh, with, with some positive change. Uh, so to that end, um. Yes, Leslie?
Yes, I just want to add too, I, someone had mentioned this at the last meeting, but I, I also wanted to. Bring attention to the police chief's statement as well, um. I don't know if anyone else on here is done one, and I apologize if you have, but, uh, Chief Livers' statement was, was wonderful. It got a lot of traction on Facebook and a lot of people liked it, they were happy to hear it and see it when they did. And I think that was a wonderful, um, document that really set the tone for this, so thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, with that, uh, any further discussion? So we have a statement and also action items to, uh, pursue the establishment of a diversity and inclusion committee. Given the timing and staffing, uh, burden at the moment, we look to that for that to happen, uh, sometime within the next two months. Probably following town meeting. And also, uh, diversity and inclusion training, uh, for professional staff, um, as, as a, uh, professional development, uh, item. If there's no other discussion, Leslie, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to ask too, um, is this, are we voting on this to actually accept the document as is? Or can there be any further wordsmithing going on, or what, what's, what's the state of this?
It's proposed for adoption, uh, as it is this evening, uh, do you have any suggestions you would like to make?
Um, well, I, I, just looking at the, the one, two, three, fourth paragraph down, um. You know, I, I don't know whether it's something, do we, should we focus on, uh, the department in particular in terms of how that person felt when she walked in? Or would it be good to just state in a general sense that it's something we need to look at as a whole with, with all of our departments?
Uh, you're talking about the specific reference, uh, um, to the police station?
Yes.
That, uh, uh, I don't know, Tim, Fred, uh, how do you feel about that?
I, I think it.
I'm sorry, I thought Fred was signaling to speak, okay, go ahead, Tim.
Um. I think it's important for all departments, um. That, that, it, it, the, the. That was just to convey the, the story, it wasn't meant to single out anybody, um. But just more that, that as a town, across, you know, like I, like it says in the statement, most departments. We, we, we need to do a better job with diversity and inclusion. So I think that's, that's really the, the goal. Is not to focus on si- single departments, but town, townwide, I mean, everybody can participate in this.
Right. Uh, Leslie?
Yeah, and I, I do understand that, I'm, I'm just wondering whether it might be better to, to relay the fact that, that she felt a certain way when she walked into a department in town. I guess one of my concerns is that if this is going to be, it's not really a living document. I don't believe, I think it's a document that will be part of, of. It's a document, so things can change over time. Where certain departments will look a certain way, so I just wanted to throw that out there as far as actually mentioning a, a department in particular. Although I understand your sentiment, Jim, and, and what her, what her quote was to you.
I, and, and, uh, sorry, and Fred, did you want to add anything to that?
Uh, no, I, I think, uh, you know, the point that Leslie brings up is, is a reasonable point is, is, you know. My understanding, when I, when I first read that, wasn't that, that, oh, oh, the police department and town hall are the two places where we really need to focus. Those were examples of, of where there, there, you know, with some, some, you know. Observations made, and, uh, you know, I think, I think Tim has already mentioned, this is really a, a matter that. Spreads all the way across every department in town.
I was going to, after hearing Leslie's. Concern and I, um. I think I might share that concern a bit, um. That, uh. That was a. Motivating experience, if you will, uh, a specific occurrence of, of walking into the police department and having that impression. But for purposes of, of a statement on the behalf of the town. And considering the tension that has arisen in some cases with respect to police departments, I would not want people to misread the statement. As, uh, as suggesting that. And so for that reason, I guess I wonder if that portion of it, if we could. Convey the sentiment without being specific about a particular, uh, department or group. Something like that.
It would be. That might be, um. Tough. Just because you're, you're gonna lose the. The focus of it. It's just gonna be general, general departments, it just doesn't. At least, when I think about it, it doesn't hold the same. Weight, I guess.
The same impact.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, Fred, yes?
Uh, I think, I think, uh, there can be a way to word this so that it isn't so specific. But, you know, an example would be when I go into, uh, any department or office in the town. Why doesn't, why aren't there people who look like me? And I think you'd get the same net effect without casting any light on any one or two departments.
Uh, how would, uh, how would we like to proceed, uh, here, any suggestions? We could, um. Postpone and, and come back with a, a revision, or we could proceed as a board to. Kind of accept the statement as, uh, the statement submitted in spirit with, uh, perhaps, uh, Tim and, and Fred. Going back and, and bring forward, uh, another, uh, revision to the effect of what we're communicating here. How do, how do people feel about that?
Yep, that, that works.
Would that be fine?
Yeah.
I, I'd be happy to proceed with approving and essentially delegating to Tim and Fred to. Craft something that I think reflects, you know, what we've communicated here, that's my feeling. Leslie?
Yeah, I agree with that, because I think if we accept it in spirit, it, I think the community needs to see that we are trying to get a statement out there as soon as possible, that we don't keep tabling it. So I think that that's actually a suggestion I agree with, and I do, I, I, I guess when I first read that portion, I do understand her quote, but it was, it was a little jarring at first. And I really don't want to necessarily pinpoint, I think. first. And I really don't want to necessarily pinpoint. I think, again, I think that the message can be made just as strongly with a little, you know, a little bit of a change in that, in that paragraph. And again, this is not a living document that will evolve. I think it needs to be very clean and clear now.
Certainly not, not, not trying to weaken the impact that it makes, but trying to kind of make the point in, you know, less, with less focus on a particular department. Julianne, any comments?
I, I, I like the, the option of accepting the documented spirit and wordsmithing it a little bit. I think that's a good idea.
All right. Any, any other discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to adopt the official statement on Black Lives Matters as presented this evening with the condition of minor changes to paragraph four that will be presented at a later date.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote. Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn? We're absent, Dawn. We've lost Dawn momentarily. I will vote aye. Will be temporarily four in favor and one pending. If Dawn returns, we can solicit her vote on this matter. Tim and Fred, thank you very much. And Virginia and Reverend Schmidt, we certainly appreciate the effort and the thoughtfulness going into this to try to provide something that speaks to the community and, you know, motivates the town to, as you say, you know, be better, aspire to be better. So thank you all very much. I appreciate that. And the next item is, I'm sorry, Chief Prenti, do we have Dawn trying to connect back that you're aware of or no?
No, we do not.
Okay. We will proceed with the next item then. Discussion and vote regarding fiscal year 2020 senior tax work off program? John, would you care to present?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So another complicating casualty of COVID-19 is our, is our senior work off, property tax work off program. So this is authorized under chapter 59, section 5K of the Mass General Laws. Essentially what this is, is it's an abatement program where qualifying seniors can work for the town on a temporary basis and earn an abatement towards their property taxes of up to $1,000. And so essentially, we, we have about 12 participants in the program in this most recent cycle. And the way it works is they would volunteer, or not volunteer, they would work for their abatement during the fiscal years from July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. So that's fiscal 20. And then that, whatever they, they earn then would get supplied to their fiscal 2021 tax bill in the form of an abatement. So if you work the full amount of time and it pays minimum wage, essentially you were backing into a wage. The town of Northborough, and this is a little bit different in every town, but we actually pay all the taxes and everything so that the senior will get the full $1,000 abatement on their taxes. So again, it's for next fiscal year. So obviously, what happened is we closed the senior center. We closed all the other offices where these seniors were working. And so only four of them out of 12 were able to get their full hours in. So what we're proposing this evening for the board is, given the circumstances and through no fault of their own, these seniors were unable to complete their hours. And similar to other employees during the COVID shutdown, they were, continued to be compensated. We're respectfully asking the board to, to vote to provide these seniors with their full abatement, which is $1,000 towards their fiscal 2021 tax bills. Again, these are folks that were in the system. And just so people know, this is a means tested program. So again, these folks are participating because this is something that they need financially through no fault of their own. They were unable to complete their obligation, just like through no fault of their own, a number of municipal employees weren't unable to work for a period of time. So I would respectfully ask that the board entertain making these seniors whole because they, they deserve it. And, and this is something that is built into our operating budget and assumed out of the gate. So it won't cause any financial hardship for the community. But failure to do so, to approve this tonight may cause a financial hardship for some of these seniors. So again, respectfully, the staff asked the board to approve this.
Thank you very much, John. Comments from board members? Tim?
It seems like a simple yes. I mean, something that's completely out of everybody's control and it's going to impact the senior community in a way that wasn't foreseen. It's, I think it's, it's the right thing to do.
Very good. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll just add the same sentiment that, as, as mentioned, this is kind of through no fault of their own, seniors were acting in good faith. And it's perfectly suitable under the circumstances with no real adverse budgetary impact here to just kind of make them whole on, on what their intended service was and their intended benefit was. So if there's, if somebody would be willing to make the motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Leslie?
I move the town vote to allow the full FY 2021 tax abatement credit of $1,000 to all senior workers employed through the town senior tax work off program pursuant to MGL chapter 59, section 5K due to the COVID-19 state of emergency.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, carries four in favor. We still do not have Dawn Rand connected back to the meeting. We'll see if she can connect a bit later. The next item is the performance evaluation of the town administrator. This is an evaluation conducted by the Board of Selectmen based on an agreed upon evaluation tool that is part of the contract established with the town administrator. We conducted the evaluation and as chair, I am responsible for collecting the results and summarizing the results, which we have in the form of a press release, which I will now read. The Board of Selectmen has completed the evaluation of the performance of town administrator John W. Codere for the past year. The town administrator received an overall rating of five out of a possible five with four being exceeds job standards and five rating being outstanding. One board member did not provide an overall rating. The board evaluated the town administrator in five main categories, including financial management, personnel management, board support and relations, personal characteristics, and communication. In the evaluation category of financial management, which includes development and implementation of the capital and operating budgets, as well as long range financial planning, the town administrator received an overall rating of 4.8. Under personnel management, the town administrator received an overall rating of 4.5 with regard to leadership, effective collective bargaining, team building, employee motivation, and the ability to guide individuals or groups toward effective task accomplishment. The overall ratings for board support, personal characteristics, and communication were 4.7, 4.9, and 4.7 respectively. And this release concludes with a quote from me. John's accomplishments, given the lean staffing, enormous workload, has again surpassed expectations. He delivers excellent value for the taxpayer dollar. John's application of sound, conservative, and defensive financial management practices over the last decade is a model for the Commonwealth and has put the town in a strong and flexible position to cope with the adversity of the current crisis. So those are the summary results of the evaluation that was conducted. I'm happy to entertain comments from the board members. Julianne, would you care to comment?
Yes. So I, I just want to say, the town is obviously a well-run town, and that is in large part due to John's managerial skills. I, I would ask in the future though, that we, that we take another look at the evaluation tool. Just to, to see if the tool is, is, is the best that we can, you know, use in these evaluations and, and also take a look at how we access information to complete the evaluation. You know, as I was, as I was doing this, I realized that at, at times like this, we think about, about goals in general. And I would even go so far as to say, when we talk about the tool, maybe we could even bundle it into a conversation about our own goals as a governing body. So I'll just conclude by saying that I look forward to having more conversations about the process in the near future. And, and thank you, John, for all of your hard work.
Thank you very much, Julianne. Leslie?
Yes, I first and foremost want to thank John for continuing to work for the town of Northborough. We are extremely lucky to have someone of your caliber working for us. And all the things that have been accomplished by you and your department heads, especially during the middle of this pandemic, have been nothing short of amazing. And you have no town assistant town administrator, and it's just so much work. And you tried to keep everyone happy and informed and advised. And just the fact that other communities look to you for, for information, help, and guidance is very telling. So I want to thank you very much for all of your work. And we are so happy that you are here with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Leslie. Tim?
Thanks for, for all that you do for the community, John. It has not been an easy three or four months, to say the least. And I know sometimes it's, it can be a thankless job, but I know talking to many people in the community, how much you're appreciated, how much your work is appreciated, and how thankful people are that they live in a community that has the things that we do have. And that, that goes a lot, goes back to, to your leadership and how you run the, the town. So thank you. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much, Tim. And I'll just add my thanks, John. I'm fortunate to have been in the position of having served on the financial planning committee and then on the Board of Selectmen through the transition from the Great Recession to the, to this point in time and observe firsthand a lot of the work and a lot of the financial policies and principles that were put into practice that, you know, today have put us in, you know, if you're going to face adversity, you want to face it on the best possible footing. And I think that's exactly where Northborough is. So a lot of that is due to your, you know, your, your skills, experience, judgment. And I think as I look around the panels here and see a number of staff members, I think when we look at all of the time spent over these last several months to deal with the COVID crisis while trying to keep the town operating, each of these individuals who are connected with us here tonight have been equally diligent in putting in long hours and working very hard on behalf of the town. It goes, you know, unseen, unnoticed, unrecognized, unacknowledged to a very great extent. But we here in the Selectmen seats, we certainly know what it takes and what it has been taking to try to keep us on, on course here. And so just thank you for everything you've done. And we look forward to continuing to work with you in the future. So thanks.
Thank you. If I may, through the chair,
Sure. Yeah.
I need to acknowledge a couple of people first. And I've got Chief Prenti, Chief Liver, Finance Director Jason Little, and DBW Director Scott Sharbanteer. And that's not the end of the list. It's all the departments, all the staff. These, these four folks right here though, have just been the rock upon which we have gotten through this crisis for the last four months. I will say, the last four months have been probably some of the most difficult of my 25 years of doing this. And, and I think the town is in, in, in great shape, given the circumstances. And, and first of all, I just want to thank you for the evaluation. Clearly, I'm pleased to be recognized for that, for that work. So thank you for that. It means a lot to me, especially coming from folks who have been on the boards for so long and have been through recessions in the past and all sorts of difficulties. But I'll just say this, fantastic staff, phenomenal boards and committees. I think if you watch the process in Northborough, when we had a joint meeting with the K-28, the superintendent, the financial planning appropriations, board of selectmen, all on one call, talking about some of the most difficult circumstances and situations that we faced, what did you see? You saw a culture of respect. You saw a culture of collaboration. And you saw really the larger community team. And that's been my blessing. You know, I lived in, I live in, I've been in this town for 22 years. I've worked for it for 17. And the thing that I appreciate most about this community are, are you folks, what you do. And I'd wish Dawn were here. She dropped out of the meeting, but you know, that consistency, those folks that just are here doing the work, day in and day out on the boards and committees that allow people like me and the department heads to do what we need to do. It's a great community, is a great spirit of cooperation, and there's a culture of respect and a culture of, of folks just working together. And as a manager, that's what you look for when you go to a community. It's why you go there. It's also why you stay. And it's why I stay. So thank you to you and the other boards and committees. And I'm, I'm just happy, happy to be here. I love this town. So thank you for the opportunity to continue serving. Thank you.
Thank you, John. This brings us to perpetual item on the schedule, next meeting date. In light of town meeting scheduled to take place July 11, and the question is whether we need to meet once more, if there are any logistics, any approvals, anything that really requires the Board of Selectmen to, to act on anything. John, do you have any?
At this point in time, we don't see the need to schedule the meeting tonight, but if the need arises, we certainly can do so.
Okay. We will schedule as needed at this time. Nothing specific. Julianne?
Well, I, 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 I wonder if we should have a meeting next Monday and just review the, the revised warrant and the items that are consolidated. And here, you know, the rationale for it, obviously there's a lot of interest and a lot of questions in that. And, you know, I know it's a lot of work for the, for Chief Prenti and everyone to attend these meetings. I, I, I don't know if all of the department heads have to come to it, but just kind of a brief discussion about the warrant articles. So I'll put that up for just, for consideration.
Sure. Yep, Leslie?
Well, in getting the question earlier about when we might expect the revised warrant, John had said, and I think it's appropriate, that I think people maybe could expect it no more than maybe a week ahead. So I think next week is a little bit early to try and have that finished off for discussion purposes.
Any other opinions?
I'm not gonna, we're not gonna be ready on the 29th. And we've had a meeting every week for three weeks straight. So we could, we need a little bit of time here.
I think, I think as we just mentioned just a moments earlier, or something like that, we certainly can and will schedule a meeting in advance of town meeting as required in order to do any review or actions that would, that would be necessary before it takes place. But let's take a breather, give town staff the opportunity to- Um, but let's, uh, take a breather, give town staff the opportunity to, uh, get some of this work done. Uh, there's still more work to do with some of the logistics and everything and, uh, we can certainly, uh, manage to get a meeting scheduled and executed if, if necessary. And with that, uh, yes, Julianne?
So, um, we, we don't have a schedule for the summer either, do we?
We don't have a schedule for the summer. Um,
We, we normally put our schedule together on a quarterly basis. We're sort of in,
Yeah.
We're in, we're in uncharted territory here with, uh, between town meeting and the board meeting every week right now. So, um, so we'll, we'll work on a, a summer schedule. Um, but we, we haven't, uh, we haven't put one together just yet.
So if I might, um, I, I'd like to say that, given all that's happening and still happening with COVID, that we think about staying on a regular schedule. I know in the summertime we usually reduce, but, um, I just think that there's a lot of, a lot of issues, a lot of financial issues that might be coming, coming up. Um, Old Town Hall, we've got to think about how to move forward with that. And I, I would, I would just say that maybe this is the year to keep a twice a month schedule.
Well, in this particular circumstance coming into July, if we're having town meeting on July eleventh, I would not anticipate having more than one selectman's meeting, uh, into the later part of the month. Um, and at that time, I suppose, uh, we could consider what we want to do with August and September, um, for a meeting schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh, unfortunately, we do not have Dawn Rand reconnected. And, uh, I'm, I'm saddened because it had been my intention to pass the virtual gavel to Dawn and have her request the motion to adjourn her, uh, her final meeting on the Board of Selectmen. She's not, uh, connected in order to do that. And, uh, so in her stead, uh, with much acknowledgement and appreciation to Dawn Bremen Rand, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to adjourn the June twenty-second, twenty twenty selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, this is a roll call vote. Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The meeting is adjourned. Dawn, thank you very much for everything you've done for the town.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you.